Okay, so that's separate than what? That was part of the auditor's contract?
Yes.
Okay, got you. Uh, yeah, again, there's no question about the work that they do, but you did say something that startled me for a second. You talked about professional development for you and your director. What about the rest of your staff?
We take care of them.
You do?
Yes.
Because I, I just want to make sure, I'll be looking for that in the budget to make sure, because I know they do a great job back there, I want to make sure that we're providing professional development for the entire team.
Believe me, we, uh, we make sure. It's, it's a challenge.
All right.
And, uh, we can never budget enough, but, uh, in IT, we've learned that we take advantage of a lot of the free stuff when we can, when it's local or nearby, we take advantage of it then, but we, um...
We're trying to talk you a layup, man. It's almost budget season. I'm just telling you, look out for your guys, man. But we'll, we'll, we'll look for the zero line items, you're going to do it for free, though.
You know, I always ask, you know, I take it to the height and then let them chop it down, but, yes, we, we do consider everyone's needs.
Seeing no additional lights, moving on to 7.8, legacy data conversion and integration services.
Yeah, this, this, Mr. Caldwell, this is, uh, on the ERP line item, and it's, um, a contract to basically clean up the data, and I defer to John, clean up the data as it goes into the old, the, the new system. Essentially, the quote, I think, that Cherry Road or Oracle, whoever gave us, was higher than if we brought it in locally, so we wanted to do a bid and have some local folks, um, have a chance to get some of this work. And so this will go to the, um, ERP line item.
I just want to make sure to notate the dollar amount, which is $414,656. Mr. Caldwell?
Just wanted to apologize for skipping ahead. My questions were actually about this one, so thank you for answering.
Seeing no other lights, 7.9, marker and tack boards, and the amount of $128,484.
Yeah, these are for 384 marker boards, uh, and 540 tack boards, uh, throughout the district.
So, Mr. Superintendent, there aren't any lights, but I do have a question about, you know, when we go to conferences, um, throughout the country, it seems that some of these kind of items are outdated. So I really wonder about us spending this amount of money on tack boards, um, when most school districts around the country are moving to more, um, tech savvy ways of interacting with our kids. So it is a question about whether or not this is a pertinent, you know, purchase, considering where we are, and as Mr. Williams so eloquently pointed out, technology changes each day, but we're still using more antiquated systems.
Ms. Phelan, can you speak to that?
Sure. Uh, thank you for your comments, and the intent is, in the future, to go to walk-talk technology, which is where you can write, literally write on walls with markers. I think the challenge we have right now is we're already behind in terms of installing over 200 marker boards across the district because of disrepair. So the intent was to replenish the supply so we can get through this school year, and then we'll transition to another model as we're, um, working on schools in the future.
Board Member Jones?
So, Board Member, uh, we attended the same conference and Chair Abby Avant. So, I saw demonstrations of, um, technology that allows the student to use their cellphone when they walk into the room. It syncs with the device, and they can use their fingers, and they can actually draw, and things of that nature. It's more energy efficient, Board Member, uh, Cornell. And, uh, it's certainly, uh, you can update it, uh, with, with patches and with, with things of that nature, and I think that's the type of thing that I, that I was amazed that we are not even thinking about, and that many districts are going to, where they have this 60-inch screen, it syncs with the student's personal device. I think that would be an excellent way for us to start integrating technology into the classroom and with the, uh, academic focus on the use of devices instead of Facebook Live. And so I really think that we need to move away from boards and things of that nature. I don't know about the walls, I didn't see that, but, uh, I think we really need to look into technology instead of investing to repair these bills. We need to see what's out there on the market, what others are doing, and see how we can start moving in that direction.
I would say, I think, to, to that point, Ms. Jones, and I was meeting with Lynn today, and I guess over the last couple of days, uh, we have a good problem. Apparently, I guess our charter enrollment is down, so there's more dollars in the, um, Shelby County schools, and then, um, our BEP allotment was higher, so we're probably looking at somewhere around $20 million, uh, that we need the board to think about how to reallocate and reinvest. Uh, and I know that's, again, a good problem, so we're going to ask the board to probably in, uh, January to think about, you know, how we want to, how we want to spend that money. And the technology is always a great place to look.
We'll be ready, anything but cell towers.
Uh, so, just so happens that Mr. Oracle is the next light.
That's got to do with revenue, Teresa. The, um, can, what's with the, what's the, I was reading this, we can't tape things to the wall anymore? That was the whole, the justification for doing this wasn't what everybody's saying. If anybody read it, Stephanie, it says that the justification is that we're getting these boards so we don't tape things to the wall or staple things to the wall. I don't know how we'd staple something to the wall, but, yeah, so...
Ms. Phelan.
I mean, was that a mistake?
It's not a mistake, so as part of the Fire Marshal walkthroughs, um, you know, we would get cited if there's an inordinate amount of, um, things taped or tacked to walls. And so in trying to move away from those practices, the tack boards are also a way that we're trying to offer places for people to tack stuff so they don't put it on walls, because if it exceeds a certain percentage of stuff on the wall, then we get written up for it by the Fire Marshal.
All right, because that was what the justification was.
Right.
But maybe we can bring some abacusers back, too.
Board Member Cornell?
Yeah, my, mine's a question of process. If, if, if you, if someone says, well, we need more of these boards, then I guess your job is to procure the boards.
And install them.
Okay. And I understand that. My question is, when do we reconsider new technology? At what point in the procurement process is the question asked academics or wherever?
Oh.
What, what's the new, is there something else we should replace it with that you've seen, like, like they saw?
I think that, you know, much to Board Member Jones' comment, you know, having a, a, um, technology plan in terms of how we want to migrate what areas of our technology for the district is probably what we need to do. It's not a facility-related activity, it's a technology-related activity across the district. Happy to partner with the Office of the CIO and the rest of the Cabinet to come up with where we want to migrate technology and for what reason.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not, you're doing your job replenishing, but the question is, as things keep changing and changing and changing, is what you said, we need, we need to re, before we buy more of the same, we need to reconsider and see if, if the other departments say, hey, we found something new, or actually have someone that can continually research for new stuff, so we can be ahead of the curve. So, I, I appreciate what you said.
Mr. Caldwell, no, no question. Your turn. Okay. Uh, moving on to 7.10, roof replacement, Overton High School, and the amount of $530,720.
That's exactly what it is, Madam Chair. I think it's been to the Facilities Committee.
Seeing no lights, 7.1, chiller installation, White Station Elementary School, and the amount of $107,834.48.
I think, I think that's been there, to the Facilities Committee as well.
Seeing no lights, moving on to 7.12, major and minor mechanical installation, emergency and support services, and the amount of $1 million.
Ms. Phelan.
This is the item that came through the, um, Facility Ad-Hoc Meeting, and we talked about it briefly in the procurement meeting that we just had today, where feedback, um, from the board was to, to, um, go in and, and ensure, you know, with the contracts department, we've done that, and this item is bringing forward, um, $1 million versus $19 million, which was actually the number, and the body of work that was brought into the procurement, the procurement process.
Seeing no lights, moving on to 7.13, reimbursement agreement for ASD chiller replacements, and the amount of $194,699.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we talked about this in the Facilities Committee, and just so the board knows, I actually did send a letter to the ASD today, um, you know, advising them that, um, they cannot make purchases outside of our process, and that while we would, um, make a recommendation to try to resolve this today, further, you know, engagement in that type of activity, we, we just wouldn't honor. Uh, copies you guys on, so you probably have it in your inbox.
Seeing no lights, thank you Superintendent, um, for your quick and rapid response to our request to make sure that, um, the ASD is in compliance with state law and that these are our buildings, so I appreciate your follow-up. 7.13 reimbursement agreement, I'm sorry, 7.14 LEA compliance report.
Yes, this is required by the state every year, and I think we want to have, uh, our General Counsel bring this back up in his report next week. Uh, the issue with this compliance report is it's so broad, and I think that school districts really across the state, uh, have some concerns with the nature of the language. It's changed a little bit this year, but it's basically saying that we're in compliance with every law rule, education law rule, and I think that one of the things that General Counsel pointed out, that, you know, just for an example of a concern is, you know, we don't want the state to come back and say, well, you're not in compliance, we're giving us data, uh, so we, we want to work with the state a little bit more, uh, before we sign off on this and ask the board to, uh, approve it, but did want to put it on here, and, uh, we'll bring it back in his report next week.
Seeing no lights, 7.15, class lobbying fees, milsaps, go-in government relations, $37,500.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just the, uh, contract with Class. As the board knows, we, um, are in a, um, collaborative with Knoxville, Chattanooga, and Nashville, uh, lobbying on issues that affect the four large school districts, and it's just our portion of the, uh, the contract.
Seeing no lights, moving on to 7.16, November 2017, budget amendment.
Ms. Johnson?
I'm presenting the budget amendment for November 2017, amendment. We're amending the federal fund. There are three new grants that we're receiving. One, we, we talked about earlier today, related to the new school for youth mini grant for $25,000. Also, um, there's an additional grant for priority schools, that is about $3.8 million as well, that would service about 28 priority schools. There'll be additional 19 positions added to that, four teacher positions, eight ed assistants, one, a family engagement specialist, and six, uh, behavior specialists as well. And this would go towards supporting those priority schools, and I'm happy to share a list of those schools as well with the board. And then the, the last relates to the, the WIN, the Workforce Investment Network, um, school grant as well. That grant is for about $92,000, and the bulk of that grant is to support a new position, a WIN associate, um, and also play additional cost for participants, um, in that program.
Board Member Love?
Was, was this a result of the, um, increased enrollment?
No, this is, this is not a result of increased enrollment. This is actually a result of us being very proactive and pursuing grants. Um, the priority school is something that Dr. Griffin and my team pursued with the, the Department of Education, and we were able to honor that $3.8.
I'm sorry, I see federal funds, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You don't even have to go into the spiel. Mr. Cornell?
I'm just, uh, wondering, let's see, the teachers, four teachers for $110,000, isn't that's pretty low, isn't it? I mean...
So that's, that's correct, so our, um, go ahead.
What is, I mean, for a teacher to be paid $27,000 for 10 months, what's that?
So, they're, they're not being paid $27,000, so I mean, part of that will go towards, um, the portion of time that they're, they're working, and any additional stipend that would be applied to them.
Oh.
So, yeah. And the same with the, the ed assistant, so that, that, the ed assistants and the teachers, um, that amount doesn't cover the, the full amount.
So it's an enhancement?
Yes.
Okay. Now, our total budget this year was how much?
So our total budget this year stands at $1.4 billion, if you look across all of our grants. Now, if you look at just the federal fund, um, that, that would be increased from $180 million to $184 million.
And that $1.4 includes pre-K and Head Start?
Uh, yes, it would include, yes, yes to both of them. There are some, uh, pre-K funds that are in special revenue and, um, that we get, and also some pre-K funds that are in the general fund that we budgeted for. But, to your point, Head Start, uh, Head Start, the pre-K expansion grants are part of that fund.
The $1.4 billion?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, 1, 1.4 billion.
Billion.
Yep.
B. Billion with a B. Seeing no other lights, we're going to move on to board items, 8.1, proposed policy, first reading.
Good evening, Board Member Superintendent. You have before you, um, a list of policies that have been vetted through our, um, Board Members' IBO committee meeting. They consist of primarily statutory and regulatory revisions, with the exception of, um, the policy on attendance zones and student conduct. And we ask for your, um, action on tonight, on first reading.
No action tonight, for next week.
Yes, thank you.
Seeing no lights, moving on to 8.2, group short-term and long-term disability insurance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think at the last meeting, the board, uh, wanted to bring this back, um, I guess for possible rescension, rescind the contract, and ask for some information, uh, because of the, I guess, the multiple RFPs, essentially. Uh, what we found is that if we just cancel the contract, there's no penalty to us. Uh, we do have, I guess, since open enrollment's been going, I guess, of the, I think it's around about 7,000 employees have selected it, but we can simply let them know that, uh, we are not offering, uh, the benefit through the district and that they can, um, secure it on their own. And that's, that's what we found in terms of what would happen if, if we rescind the contract.
Board Member Caldwell?
So, um, my memory's getting bad, but I think that's well above the minimum amount that they cost, they said would cause any expense to the district, is that correct? The minimum number of people in the, we, we met the hurdle, I think it was 2,500 employees, and so we're well over that, and so effectively, there's not going to be, you know, if, if we don't rescind it, and I'm, just want everybody to be aware of that there, there's no cost to the district, no raising of, of the premiums, and that, that was all, I just wanted to be clear on that.
That's correct, and I think, again, just for some context, with this in the audience, Mr. Caldwell, this was just, so employees can always get their own short-term disability policies. This year, we just tried to secure one vendor that employees could go to, but it never prohibited them from going to other places, so if we rescind it, then it'll just go back to status quo, and employees can continue to get it from who they want to get it from, and we'll continue to, um, do payroll deduction.
Board Member Woods?
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent, uh, I'm trying to look at the end game here. I know there was a great deal of dialogue around the process, the procurement process. I think Board Member asked really good questions, uh, but I'm, I'm thinking through, what problem are you solving, or are you creating one here? If you cancel this contract, to Caldwell's point, well over, uh, the minimum threshold, 7,000 employees have elected this benefit, you, you send our communication now that the board, because it's not you, the board has elected to cancel this contract, what is the, walk me through what does next Tuesday look like for, or preferably Wednesday morning, when my voicemail is full?
We would, Mr. Woods, if we did it, we wouldn't say to board, we would just say...
Well, no, I'm not, I'm really just, I'm not, that's not really what I mean, but seriously, I'm saying, like, I, I get the point that there are other vendors out there. Would it not be an easier solution to add those, you know, other vendors, communicate to those teachers that there are other options? I thought that's what we were getting at, is that we had eliminated other possible vendors, uh, and that this opt-out model gave, uh, an advantage to, uh, this particular vendor. If we cancel, I just want somebody to talk me through, what does the, what's the implication of the employees, and what does their process, I mean, they're busy teaching school, like, what, what does that look like for them?
Um, I think, Board Member Woods, and, uh, Board Members, we, we do have some concerns about if we were to cancel, um, or, or opt out of the, the current contract that the board has, you know, at this point voted on. I think, can we do it? The answer to that is, is exactly what Superintendent Hopson said, yes, we can, but at this point, we have, um, approximately over 8,000 employees that have elected to keep, um, or enroll in the short-term and long-term disability coverage through the selective vendor that will become effective January 1 of, uh, 2018. So if, if, if that's rescinded, what we would have to do is really, really ensure that we've communicated to all those employees to let them know that they may have other options, but some of the things that, that obviously concern us is the ability for us to do that. People may have terminated their coverage through one of the other vendors, and those other vendors that are available, they offer individual policies. And so the whole point of us bringing this recommendation to the board was to offer a group-sponsored product that allowed employees to get short and long-term disability coverage at a much cheaper rate. Um, so by us, you know, now rescinding that, what we would say is you have the option to get the coverage, but it is going to cost you more because you would have to go to one of these, um, one of the vendors that offers the individual plan. I don't know if, for example, if you had a pre-existing condition, if they would, um, make you meet any eligibility requirements all over again, and because those are individual policies, the district can't offer any assistance with those policies as we could with a group-sponsored program. Um, so there are, you know, several concerns. Additionally, we currently do offer a group-sponsored, long-term disability program. Right now is through, um, standard. So, you know, we've notified them that, that they obviously participated in this RFP process. We notified them that they were not, you know, the winning, um, they did not have the winning, um, response or bid. So we've notified them that we were going to end that contract, so now we would have to kind of go back to them and also see, would we be able to continue the, at least the long-term disability coverage, um, through them as well, for the employees that currently have that benefit, and that can, elected to continue a long-term disability group-sponsored plan. So, short answer, can we do it? Yes, we can, but are there concerns? I think we definitely have some concerns.
So Superintendent, what I'll say there is, I think, uh, what you guys are doing is, uh, is proper protocol, this is a board's decision. Uh, there was, uh, there was points raised, and we debated this issue in great detail, and now it will be up to us to, uh, to ultimately vote on this particular item. I will tell you, due to the uncertainty of this, uh, and that is not a cost to the district, while I think the procurement questions were valid, uh, I will not be voting to, uh, suspend this. I will encourage you all to communicate with our employees on what other options that are out there, maybe send them a list and contact information of the top three, uh, vendors, but, uh, I mean, I think you're creating a problem that, that I think they voiced legitimate concerns, but I, I, I am not support of, until you know all the unintended consequences of this, of cancelling this contract, I will not be supporting it.
Board Member Jones?
We haven't deducted, we've started deducting yet, so we haven't done that.
Started the payroll deduction. Your open enrollment just ended, um, last Tuesday.
So, and this is something new that they didn't have before?
The, the group-sponsored short-term disability is not something that they've had before. They either could have gotten a short-term disability through, like, one of the three vendors that offer the individual policies. What we did offer was a group long-term disability program through standard.
So, um, I was, I was present for both debates, and there were valid questions. Um, I voted in favor of it, but I will not be voting in favor of keeping it. I will vote to rescind the contract. I think it's more important for us to communicate, if we're going to communicate, communicate anything, we need to communicate when the calls come into the inbox that we can reconsider this, we can do another RFP, we can still pursue this. It's not the end, it's not the final, we as a board, and I certainly would support doing that, but I can't support this. And so, um, I will be voting to rescind the contract, and I would urge the Superintendent to have a real conversation with all the board members about the concerns and issues that, uh, led up to this, putting this back on the agenda, and perhaps looking at this and doing, trying to come up with something that's best for all employees. I, I understand it doesn't cost the district anything, and I understand, uh, it's providing a group, uh, plan, but we need to make sure we're doing what's best for employees. This process, uh, has been fraught with all types of issues and concerns from this board that didn't just start tonight. And so I'm more concerned with doing something that's best for employees, getting the best deal for the employees. None of it's based on how we're putting this out there, whoever the provider is, is going to cost us anything. So that's not the issue, but I'll tell individuals who call my inbox, and who put messages in my inbox and who called me, that we're trying to do what's right for the employees. Uh, it is my desire that there will be another opportunity for them to enroll. Uh, you haven't had any deductions. If you feel the need to secure this in the interim, then there are others out there, as you have said. And, uh, when we, if and when we bring this back, we'll certainly communicate that, but that's my desire, so that's what I'll tell them.
Board Member Love?
So, Board Member Jones basically, um, stated, uh, what I was going to say. So Superintendent, um, what, what is the, the current price that we have now for our...
You mean with the...
I didn't hear the question.
What's the, what's the current rate?
The current rate.
The current rate?
Um, I think, you know, that's actually one of the issues. What we offer now for, for short-term disability is, is just the ability for the employee to elect the coverage, but it's, it's an individual plan, and we simply offer the payroll deduction. So we don't know what those plans are, we don't know what the rates are. I think, you know, we've come up with some examples, we even have people, um, on, like, the benefits team that have the coverage, and for the disability plan, um, I think one, one example was an employee was paying like $70 a paycheck for disability coverage, and that's per paycheck, so that's like $140 a month. You know, with the group-sponsored plan, you get rates that are less than half that. And that was the, that was kind of the catalyst for us even going down this road, and I will say, like, you know, I understand that there were questions related to the, to, to the procurement process and the process that we went through, um, with the initial RFPs, and, and why we chose to go out with the second RFP. And again, the reason that we chose to go out the second time, um, with an RFP was simply because we did not send the, we did not extend that personal invitation to the current vendors who offer individual plans. to the current vendors who offer individual plans. They were not offering our employees an exact replica of what we presented through this recommendation.
And, you know, just to make the border where, I did meet with Ms. Smalls for a couple of hours today, and she, she answered the questions. The issue is, like Board Member Jones stated, the issue was the process of how it happened. And, you know, I wasn't comfortable with the process of how it happened. But I did meet with her, she did, she did answer the questions, but it still went back to the process of how it was handled, how we got to the place we are right now.
Board Member Vibbs.
Thank you, Chair. I think Board Member Jones and Board Member Love have said exactly kind of a lot of my thoughts. I think ultimately, if we're saying, we definitely want to have the best product for our employees, and I think that is the catch that we're saying. And I don't feel comfortable about the process that we had when we went through what we just did. I think if you, if, let's say we were to say, we still want to offer this. Superintendent, what would it look like if we then said, putting out another RFP? Give me a timeline of that.
Yeah, we certainly could do another RFP. You know, I think that, I'd want to do a couple of things if we do that. I mean, I think you guys are going to talk about a disparity study now. I want to see what impact that would have on it. And then also, just we need to get with the team to figure out realistically what the time would be. Is it a 30-day process, a 60-day process? So if you give me a day or two, I can tell you how long it'd take.
Okay, I would appreciate having that information. I think ultimately, you know, we're saying, oh, it's not a cost to us, that's okay. I think that we can't really take on that attitude of it. I think, you know, it needs to be something, if we're going to offer something for our employees, it needs to be the best product that we can stand behind the process. So when we do get those questions on our phone, via email, whatever they are, that we're truly able to stand up and say, we said yes to this for this reason. And I think that's the ultimate thing about what we're looking at today.
Mr. Cornell.
What's interesting to me is that I have a long-term care policy with the state, and the state just said, well, we're not doing it anymore, and you'll get a letter from the person you purchased the policy from, and you'll be paying them directly. So I think what might happen here is, is these people would just get a letter saying that this has been, this payroll deduction's been discontinued. You'll get a letter from the company and pay them directly until something new's set up. Wouldn't that be the-
I think it depends on what the employee actually had. So a couple of points, not all employees were enrolled in the individual disability policies. We did have a substantial number of employees, probably well over half of our benefit eligible population, to now enroll in the group-sponsored, short-term, long-term disability program. But to Board Member Jones's point, we have not started the payroll deductions yet, but they have made an affirmative election to enroll in that coverage. So it's, it's not just sending them a letter telling them to go back to what they had, because all of them did not have an individual policy. So some employees may be kind of left without a group-sponsored option or an option that they can actually afford, because the individual policies are just more expensive. But, you know, we've certainly tried to make sure that we kept the vendors that offer the individual policies engaged through like the entire open enrollment process. We had a benefits fair, they were all here, employees spoke with them. We, you know, we definitely include them and keep them engaged in everything that we do just to make sure that employees are aware of all the options. Even though we only payroll deduct for those benefits, we still make sure that we include them in everything. Communications, all of that.
But now they were automatically enrolled?
In the, in the group-sponsored, yes, you were automatically enrolled, and if you did not want it, you had to opt out, which we have about, we have well over, you know, 10,000 benefit eligible employees, but only about 8,000 opted to keep or affirm their election.
And I think that if we do, if we do go back out to bid, there will be a group plan offered at some point. Now, Madam Chair, we've used the term rescind, which I think is a parliamentary term, but I believe we discussed before the contract term would be to cancel. So I'm asking-
That would be correct.
I'm asking, if there's going to be a motion, I'm asking the parliamentarian who's not a lawyer and the lawyer who's not a parliamentarian. If they could tell me, which is neither, what do we do?
So, General Counsel.
He is passing the buck.
You're correct, the parliamentary term is rescind. Also, the, an equivalent term is to annul. The effect would be to cancel the contract.
Does that answer your question?
A legal counsel disagrees with me.
Do we need to? I wish that, I would like to make sure that the motion to rescind, which is an effect to annul, is actually going to be considered a cancellation, which I believe we can do under the contract.
You've used all three of the words, thank you. Mr. Cornell, you got them all in, you got it in.
But that's true, right? That's, that's how we're going to enact this? The motion passes?
But I think you're talking about taking action next week.
It is, it would have to be action next week, because we are not, this is not a voting meeting.
That's correct.
Mr. Oral.
Lieutenant, the, so, the winning bidder, I remember this, was MetLife, and the person who came in second was who? And so either you decided to put this back on the agenda, or somebody did. I'm curious why this is back on the agenda. I mean, we voted on hundreds of contracts, and I've never seen like an air conditioning contract, anything else put back on the agenda. Who put this back on the agenda? What's that, who put it back on the agenda? I mean, somebody had to request it to be on the agenda.
Ms. Jones requested it to be back on the agenda.
Okay, I'm just curious. So usually I thought we'd like do this the next meeting when we have a procedural thing, and it would have been easier to maybe do it next week. That's okay, I think it was like three months ago, but-
Yeah, we did, you missed the last meeting where we did talk about putting it on the agenda for this particular meeting.
Got you, I apologize for that.
No problem.
So, the, the winning bidder, and I remember we rebid this thing, was MetLife. So were they less expensive? Or you may be Ms. Smalls.
Yes, they were.
Do you remember like, throw out some figures, I'm just curious. Because we're trying to take care of our employees here, and I understand we're providing them a group benefit that we're not paying for, that they're paying for, but we're taking advantage of our group purchasing power to get them a lesser deal.
That's exactly right, and that's the difference between the group-sponsored versus the individual. So when we look at the financial offer from MetLife for the option, the short-term disability plan option that would offer the seven-day elimination period, the cost was about $4.6 million compared to Unum's. Their cost for the equivalent coverage was about $5.8 million. So there was a difference in-
That was short-term.
That's for short-term.
And that's like 30-day waiting period, 60-day waiting?
Was for a seven-day elimination period and a 26-week total benefit. So we, what we offered employees were two options. You can get a plan with a seven-day elimination period or waiting period, or a 30-day elimination period. Obviously, the 30-day plan is more cost-effective to employees, and there was about a little over a million dollars in cost, in total cost from the two bidding, or the two responses for those plans as well.
So if you extrapolate that, if there's 10,000 people, and it's a million dollars difference, if everybody took it, it would be $10, I mean, $100, no, it's a, it'd be $100 a year, $8.50 a month difference, is that, am I doing that right?
Um, per, for the employees-
How much does it save the employees for the winning bidder that we selected?
And, and this is where it gets a little sticky, because we, it's not like we are currently offering a comparable type of coverage.
No, no, I mean between the bidders. What's the difference in price for employed? Is it not broken down for employee?
Yes, we do have, and I'll ask Ms. Poindexter, do you have the per, the per thousand-dollar cost of coverage? We do have those rates broken down, but when we're analyzing the bid, we look at the total cost.
What, like if everybody accepted the coverage, and then what that would be?
Yes, if all the, if all the benefit eligible employees accepted the coverage and the cost. And so that's how we compare like the total cost. But we, it is broken down, because it's age-banded, so there are rates kind of based on age. And we can, we can calculate what those rates would be like for an average employee.
Is there some ambiguity here, or something I'm missing? Is there some nuance? Is there something I'm missing on why that, Met, is it MetLife? Are they cheaper than whomever else?
Yes, their bid, their quote was cheaper, their cost was cheaper than Unum's cost.
So if-
We did, you know, as part of the process, we, we reach out to the finalists and offer them the opportunity to submit a best and final offer. MetLife did come back with a best and final offer. Unum stayed status quo as a relation, they didn't change their rates. So through the best and final offer process, MetLife reduced their rates even more, which is why we have, you know, the decreased rate for MetLife.
Okay, so it saved our employees who were not paying for this benefit for, they're paying for themselves. We saved them money.
Yes, if I follow you correctly.
If they chose the-
Yes, yes.
Well, I think y'all did a good job, so anyway.
Thank you.
I don't see the controversy, but I would elect to stick with them until the process is done, meaning till their contract's over. And then if y'all want to rebid it next year, rebid it next year.
I think that's definitely a fair recommendation.
Board Member Jones.
So when you bid this the first time, you didn't bring that to us. And so your reason for putting this back out was a mistake on you, on the district's part?
I think, you know, I wouldn't say necessarily a mistake. What we did not do was offer the personal invitation. And I think like, even in conversations earlier today, as we've talked about like the process, the procurement process, and potentially going back to something that we used to do with Legacy Memphis City Schools, where we had a vendor list. So if you were an insurance vendor, regardless-
So, I mean to be rude, but I've heard that two or three times. So you didn't, it was something that the district did in the process that caused you to unilaterally decide, I'm not, I've selected this bidder, but now I'm going to renege on that and go back out again. And that's after that person's information, numbers, figures, what they had was already out there for everyone to see, is that correct or not?
We never brought it to the board as a recommendation, I am not sure.
The information is public at the point, that you got it to a public point, did you not? When, on the first selection?
I would have to defer to procurement on that one.
So was the, at the first time, did you offer the option to give their last, whatever you call it?
Best and final.
Best and final?
Yes, ma'am.
And it wasn't, the best and final wasn't the current vendor, the first time around?
The winning bidder last time was-
The first time around.
The first time around, it was, it was, you know-
So then after that first time around, knew all of the numbers and all of the figures, and they made their best offer and lost out, then the process was started all over again, and then they were, lo and behold, able to make a better offer. Is that what you're saying?
No, ma'am, I don't, no, ma'am, that's not exactly what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't need any more explanation, thank you.
Other? Mr. Oral.
Second time, I was curious about Ms. Jones's comments, so I'm going to let you finish. Explain that again, just so, did we look at it the first time?
No, it, it made it, I think, to the, and we, I think we confirmed this with procurement. It made it to the board work session agenda, but we pulled it. We pulled the recommendation. So we didn't bring it, and this was, this was in 2016.
Someone answer Ms. Jones's question, did we look at it on here? Was it out there in public?
And that's what I was saying, we didn't.
If it was, if it was for work session in the public-
I'm asking, that's what I'm asking, I want to know the answer.
It's on the agenda days before the meeting. We didn't discuss it because it was pulled, but it was certainly out in the public.
But she's got a valid point, I'm asking, and maybe the camera can answer, was it out there? And was, I understand what you're saying, if you did it on an HVAC contract, and then you pulled it back, and then you let somebody else redo it, I just-
If it made it to the agenda, it certainly was published.
All right, so, so that, I understand her point, whether it was a mistake or not. So, because I'm trying to remember, it was three months ago. Why did it then, why did it get rebid? Because we didn't extend an invitation to MetLife to bid on it?
No, sir, we have three current vendors that offer individual policies. It's Colonial, American Fidelity, and Aflac. We did not send a personal invitation for them to bid on it. We were starting to hear several complaints from those vendors, as well as some board members were asking why did not, why we, why we didn't send, extend a personal invitation to them in terms of who we sent the RFP out to. We sent the RFP out to initially seven vendors who, who are, who are really in the group-sponsored, short-term disability business. And so the current vendors, they offer disability programs, but it's on an individual basis. But we did, we did, after we pulled it, we met with those vendors, we sat down to add to tell them, you know, kind of what our plans were, what we were thinking, and what we were looking for, to give them an opportunity to bid. So really, the reason that we pulled it last time was for those three vendors, honestly.
And none of them were the successful bidder?
No, sir, they were not.
So, in fairness to the other 10, it's a competitive marketplace, and I'm glad you answered these questions. I still think y'all did a good job, and you did it for the right reason, because the winning bidder was not the one complaining, but maybe took advantage of the opportunity. Was MetLife the one last year when, and it was over the-
It was for the life insurance.
Life insurance, that all of a sudden it went down like $5 million?
None.
Because we went through a similar process, we rebid that. And so another vendor, Minnesota Life, they were able to come in, and they submitted a lower, a lower, a lower response in terms of the bid.
So in the interest of fairness, and not that y'all did anything wrong, I understand what you did, maybe it does make sense, because I was thinking different, to do it one more time, to be fair to everybody. And I didn't initially think that, because, but I didn't remember all the background. But, but now Unum's got their price out there, MetLife's got their price, and the other five people have their price. So maybe Aetna comes in, I'm just making that up, I know they're on there, and they come in and say, huh, we know the price point here, we'll do it. I mean, that's not the best way to do business, but, and it's probably a pain for somebody. And maybe MetLife or whomever will come in even lower, save the employees more money.
That, that could obviously be the case. I will say, the second go-around, we did have 12 vendors that responded to the 2017 RFP.
And your, your ratio of employees, your ratio of people that enrolled to employees is about 80%? Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, sir.
So someone's going to know, they're going to get about 8,000 people? Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, Teresa, that 80, 8,000 to 10,000 said, we want it.
Call for them to automatically be enrolled, and then you have to opt out.
So how many people have opted out, let me see? Have 2,000 opted out?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, because that was the only way-
Some, a couple thousand may not even, they just don't even know it, like you were saying, or someone said, and it's coming out of their paycheck.
Or they chose not to do it, they could have kept their individual policies. We did receive, you know, obviously, a lot of employees were calling, asking questions during open enrollment, and really trying to weigh the pros and cons of sticking with an individual policy versus going with the group-sponsored policy. And I even talked to a few of them. And for some folks, depending on their situation, it was more advantageous and beneficial for them to stick with an individual policy. They were willing to pay more to get a higher level of benefit. For some people, they wanted it just in case something happened. They felt like they were relatively healthy, they didn't expect anything, but they wanted that safeguard in place. So like the group-sponsored plan was the best benefit for them. So through the open enrollment process, we were talking to employees, and it was great. The great thing about it is employees had actual options. It wasn't just you have to- just, you have to choose this individual long-term disability policy. You now can choose one that's group-sponsored, that's cheaper, that could better fit your needs, or if you need, you know, something that's going to provide a higher level of income replacement, you have that option as well.
Right, it's a commodity. It's no big deal. So, but, but what I'm saying is, now, the winning bidder the first time, even though, but it got thrown out in public, shown, shown in public, I didn't realize that. The winning bidder the second time, it got shown in public, so now everybody knows what their winning bid was. I mean, I, I mean, I just think in fairness, Superintendent, in fairness, just, I mean, it's disadvantaged to both of them now, because the other 10 people know exactly what they were going to charge. And maybe we'll save money for the employees even better. And it's a commodity. It doesn't matter who, I couldn't care less who gets it. But let them fight all over each other, and, and do it. We, we obviously didn't do things, you know, and, and abundance of caution the second time, which was good. But anyway, that's just my point. Sorry, it took too long, I was asking a question.
So I think what, we came into this with just the mindset of whatever the board wants to do. I mean, I think it's not a terrible hurdle to have to notify employees that we're not offering the benefits. So we will bend towards the will of the board.
So...
Board Member Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The gavel's getting bigger and bigger around here, man. So, I, I, again, I want to just impress upon the board that, I think there are a couple of things that we need to have a discussion on, and likely, unlikely tonight, but in the, in the, in the unlikely event that there's a procurement issue that comes up again, and a vendor's information is made public, you guys took it upon yourselves to do dealings and put the RFP back out again. I'm not opposed to doing another RFP. I do think we need to establish precedent and say, what will be our protocol when this happens in the future? I think that's Board Member Jones's point, that original vendor was disadvantaged, so we say we're going to put out another RFP. Well, we still, that, you don't, you don't unring that veil. That vendor is still going to be disadvantaged, and may not be able to compete with the winning vendor's bid regardless. But I do think we need to have a protocol. I think that's what some of the board members are asking, saying, what will be our process in the unlikely event that that occurs again? So, and so since, if the will of the board is to put another RFP out, I want to know what happens. While I agree with the board that they don't have anything, if your boss comes in and says, you're going to get a raise January 1, and I come back and say, well, you, I'm going to wait till the summer to give it to you, while you may not have it today, you anticipated that something happening January 1. You may have moms, potential moms that are planning pregnancies. There are things that may be in the pipeline that will occur come January 1. So I think you can do it simultaneously. I would like for you to see if you can put out an RFP to accomplish the goal of having a fair process. But at the end of the day, if we've made commitment to 8,000 employees, that they were going to have a benefit come January 1, I do think you're taking something from them. I do think you're taking something from them.
Seeing no other lights, Superintendent, I appreciate all the healthy discussion amongst board members. I think there is some impetus to have a new RFP, but I think we will wait to see the will of the board next week, if there is a motion to rescind and officially cancel, or if people are moving forward with the current contract. I do believe that having this kind of level of discussion about a healthy process, if it makes it more competitive, and it's a better benefit for our employees, I'm all in favor of that. Moving on to 8.3, SES School Board Strategic School Funds Allocation Program Resolution, December 2017.
Mr. Johnson?
We received four requests from two board members, and we've highlighted them here. Board Member Caldwell received three requests from Central High School. One related to irrigation system, a sound system, and a bottle refilling system for their schools. And then, we've also received a request from Board Chair Avat, related to Westwood High, a weather bug program for their STEM program. And those are highlighted, and the resolution is asking for the approval of those allocations, and directing the Superintendent to allocate those funds to the respective schools, to implement the bug projects.
Seeing no comments. Moving on to 8.4, Board Legal Counsel and the Amount of $80,000. I guess I'll speak on, since it's a board item. This is a contract in order for the board to obtain its own legal counsel. The, we had RFPs from two local firms, and the recommendation, based on the polling of the board, was to go with the Morris Law Firm. And this is an amount up to needed in legal fees for the representation of the board on an unneeded basis, as-needed basis. Mr. McCormick?
I just want to clarify then, so is this a up to $80,000 that will be billed at an hourly rate, as we require service from the law firm?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional lights. Moving on to 8.5, 2017-2018 Board Meeting Calendar. This is a request to change the date based on the, for the February work session, from the date of the 30th to the 20th, because of the Tennessee School Board's schedule in February for, on the Hill Day. So when we made a recommendation for our calendar to be approved, this date was not solidified. And now that we do have the date for TSBAs on the Hill Day, we would like to change the date from the 13th to the 20th of the work session. Seeing no lights. There's no other business before the board? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. I forgot Ms. Jones. 8.6, the disparity study.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an item that was discussed in our procurement committee meeting earlier this afternoon. It was not published with the regular agenda. We did agree to put it on for, I think at this point, based on what was presented at the committee meeting, there is a need for the board to weigh in and vote on the acceptance of that recommendation. So it would be my desire, if we could add this to the agenda next week for a formal vote.
If there are no objections, then this item will be added to the agenda for the board business meeting. There's no other business, the meeting is adjourned.
You good with your last time? You good? You finished your last time?
Yes.